Ready? Right now?
Yep.
And we're back. Before we begin with our public hearing, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Leans.
Pledge of Leans to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. First, item five on the agenda is our public hearing with respect to the bring your own bottle policy. And this public hearing has been noticed. I think it was noticed twice in the Milton Times.
Correct.
It has been up on the website. And we will follow our proceedings for conducting public hearings that have been without objection. These procedures haven't been adopted as a policy by this board, but we've had a first reading of it. And these procedures provide that a public hearing such as this would be noticed, as it has been, and would be publicized, as it has been. And we'd make available printed information. We made available the proposed regulations that we had presented by council. And then the final thing is that we give all persons present an equal opportunity to be heard in accordance with our policy. Our policy is that the chair, and that's me, would preside at the hearing, and that we would follow certain procedures going forward. If it's just the same to all of you, I'd like to try to keep people to about five minutes, if that works. If you need more time, how much time do you think? Okay. If you need more time, it's not a hard and fast rule. We just don't want to be, we don't want to have any long filibusters, if possible, on this. But we do want to hear what people have to say. That's the whole point of this, of this public hearing. And so with that, and actually, we have a sign-in sheet. Is that for the public hearing?
Correct.
We have a sign-in sheet. So we'd ask people who want to be heard on this to come in and sign in at the sign-in sheet and, and then say whatever they want to say. I will say that we, before we get started with the comments, we have received comments from the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition in writing. They made what they characterized as minor improvements to the current draft rules, and they, they made two suggestions to include in the, in the rules. And one of them has to do with hours of use, and they strongly recommended setting limits and explicit limits for hours of use. And they also suggested language along the lines of, quote, "The establishment should immediately report to the Milton Police Department two situations. One, any situation in which patrons consuming alcohol appear to be present, appear to present a danger to themselves or others, either inside or on public ways by virtue of the consumption of alcoholic beverages. And two, any consumption by a person under age 21." And according to the, our friends at the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, Chief King is a proponent of that language. The Coalition also provided us with, additionally provided us with the North Borough policy. And we might just go through that. That was just provided the other day. We might go through that and see how it differs from the draft regulations that we have had prepared by town council. So, apologize for holding people up on that, but just wanted to get that out there, since we did receive that feedback from the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Council. With that, who would like to be heard?
You heard very gratefully.
All right.
My name's Ned Corcoran. I'm an attorney, practicing in land use development here in the town. I reviewed the proposed regulation. I also have seen the North Borough regulation, and I'm concerned about one particular issue in the proposed regulation, section 12, J, excuse me, speaks to, "Permittees shall not open, pour, or otherwise handle alcoholic beverages." That seems to me to create a major potential problem. I think the, it's more appropriate that the regulations would say that trained employees, properly trained employees shall provide storage and open, pour, or otherwise handle alcoholic beverages. I think it's, you know, you can imagine four guys walking into a BYOB restaurant in East Milton with a case of beer, and no one's overseeing how they are drinking because no one's, they're not bringing the next beer out to them and paying attention to the pace of drinking, how much they're drinking. And they leave an hour and a half later, having had dinner and consumed a case of beer. You know, how, where's the protection? So, I think, I think the reverse is appropriate, is that, that trained, properly tipped certified employees be the ones who would handle and deliver the booze. I, you know, I grew up in Newport, Newport, Rhode Island. Newport has a cap on liquor licenses for bars and restaurants. And so, in the 1990s, they expanded into the BYOB process. I have friends who own restaurants with BYOB, who provide BYOB service. When you walk in with a bottle of wine or beer, you hand it to them. They refrigerate as appropriate, and then you ask them to come and either refill your wine or bring you another beer. It gives them control over what you're doing, how you're doing it. And you pay a corkage fee to the, to the restaurant for the, for the cost of providing that service. So I just think it's really, if something's going to happen here, you can imagine that if an incident occurred after someone left a BYOB without having properly been overseen, and there's an accident, the lawsuit, the first initial lawsuit would be against the establishment. The insurance carrier presumably would deny coverage because, you know, they weren't, in fact, they were prohibited from overseeing how a person was drinking. And if they follow that properly, then there's no, they would be denied coverage. You'd think that, you know, my next turn to the town to say, hey, you allowed this to happen without requiring an appropriate level of oversight. So I think that's, I just think that's really a recipe for disaster. The other thing I think I agree with is that a common victual's license ought, anyone applying ought to have a common victual's license, because that gives, that gives the town some level of control over the entity. It's one thing to say you'll pull the BYOB permit, but to also have their common victual's license at risk as well, I think, is important for the town. So with that, I would thank you for the review and the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Oh, one thing, and you may not have an answer to this. You mentioned properly trained employees. Excuse me. I guess the question is, what, what would that mean?
I think it would mean it would be tip certified. There's other reference in here to following the rules under chapter 138.
Yep.
So as if they were operating under a full liquor license, anyone handling liquor would have to be properly tip certified in order to be able to provide that service.
Okay.
And whether or not, you know, if a restaurant had six servers, all six may not be tip certified, but the person, the one or two who are providing, handling the liquor would have to be tip certified. So maybe that's a special role that's carved out for, for one server.
Ned, what does TIPS stand for?
It's a, it's an acronym for the type of, the training that's required under the alcohol control law. I don't know what the acronym, TIPS. I don't know what it, what it specifically stands for, but it is a, a training that's required of those who provide liquor and alcohol liquor service. They have to be certified, they've been trained, they have to be certified, they know how to pay attention to how, you know, how people are acting, when they've been drinking, how much they've been drinking, and that type of stuff.
Okay.
It's required of any establishment that has a liquor license. It was required, for example, of the Wallace and Golf Club when their license was renewed and expanded. Remember, we came before the board to expand in the area of the golf, the beverage cart. And so, you know, specifically required that any beverage cart operator would be TIPS certified.
All right. Excellent.
I have a question regarding the comment. Can I ask it now?
The comment from?
Regarding Mr. Corcoran's comment.
Oh, please, yes.
Okay. Ned, just subsection K. You referenced subsection J, but subsection K actually does talk about these corkage fees, and it really is kind of alerting the permit holder that they should consider that, because that's going to impact their own liability insurance issues. I notice the North Borough policy also has a prohibition on restaurant or permit holder employees pouring or storing or in any way coming into contact with the alcohol, other than providing glasses, or I think, as our policy said, removing empty bottles and throwing them away. Can you, can you maybe address subsection K and the liability issues in terms of the permit holder, if, if its employees were to be actually the one pouring and storing the alcohol?
I think it's, well, I, I know that in cases in Newport, Rhode Island, corkage fees are charged to the patron for the purpose of, of providing the liquor service. You know, the beer, it's beer and wine only, but of pouring the wine and bringing, you know, another beer over to the table. And so it's a reasonable charge that is there for the, for the purpose of handling that. Now they, because of that, they would, you know, if a, if a restaurant had a permit like this, they would have to have liquor liability insurance associated with providing that coverage. You know, if they, if they didn't, they'd certainly be at risk to something happening. I can't speak specifically to how that, you know, I understand that this is town of Western language. I'm not sure exactly how that works. But it just seems to me the bigger question is the town making sure that the, that the permittee is paying attention, is properly, its staff is properly trained, that they're the ones that are properly handling the beer and wine once it enters the restaurant. And that, yes, they should be allowed a corkage fee. Any provision of that type of service by a BYOB permittee would certainly be an issue of concern for their insurance carrier. Whether or not they're allowed or required to handle or prohibited from handling, there's alcohol being consumed on their premises. If something happens on the premises, you know, their insurance carrier has to understand what, under what conditions it's happening, why it's happening, and make sure that they're acting properly with respect to their insurance requirements.
Okay. And I just have one follow-up question. So would your comment about not keeping subsection J and allowing the employees of the common victual license holder to be the one that does the pouring and the storage and service of the alcohol, is that, I'm guessing, but I just want to confirm, that your comment would apply, whether it's somebody coming into a restaurant, I'd say a couple coming into dinner and bringing a bottle, or a larger organization renting out, say, a club, like perhaps the Milton Club? So the same comment would apply in both scenarios?
Absolutely.
Are you talking about possibly a large function or just two people having dinner?
Absolutely. And what I would recommend is that you amend that first sentence in J to say that BYOB permittees shall provide that trained employees shall provide storage of and shall open, pour, or otherwise handle, so that it's an affirmative requirement that beer and wine be properly handled by properly trained staff. And that, I think, would ultimately protect the town, but it also would protect, it would be a much clearer understanding from an insurance perspective and a, an owner liability perspective that they are behaving in the same manner as if they had a full liquor license.
Okay. Thank you. Ned, if you have that language, if you could just maybe email it, just so we have it?
Sure.
That'd be helpful. Let's go.
I have a follow-up question, if that's okay. I think I heard you say, suggest tying the vittler's license to proper performance on the BYOB license, so that if there's, if there's an issue with, with the BYOB, that their vittler's license may also be in jeopardy.
Correct. So I think that, as I understand it, the intent is that a common victual's license that the, than any entity applying, whether it's a club or whether it's a restaurant, would be required to have a common victual's license as a prerequisite to applying for a BYOB permit, or prerequisite to receiving approval for a BYOB permit. And that the additional protection the town would have is that the failure to properly monitor the alcohol consumption could, could be a failure to properly act within the confines of the, of the CV license, and therefore a reason to revoke, you know, suspend or revoke the CV license.
My apologies, Ms. Collins. I need to, I need to control my late afternoon caffeine, which is making me a little more energetic. Anything else from Mr. Corcoran? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to be heard on the, the bring your own bottle issue? Mr. DeLuca, I was, I was going to ask you to come up anyway, so that works well. This is Mr. DeLuca, who's town council. You can introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Attorney David DeLuca for the Town of Milton. As you know, I've been working rather closely with your town administrator and others on this matter. What I was able to provide to you a couple of weeks ago is a draft, and, and I was appreciative of receiving the comments from the, I call it, the Substance Abuse Group and their addition of the North Borough rules and regulations, very good for comparison. What I can say generally is that this is not really a well-developed area of the law. We have under chapter 138 a very definite scheme of alcohol control for license holders. This is really something different, and an opportunity for proprietors to, to invite the public in and to be able to at least have some opportunity to provide, provide for themselves the alcohol, beer and wine in this case, to go along with the consumption of food. It's a policy decision to be made by the board, and whether or not you see, see that as a right opportunity for the Town of Milton. That was, as we understood from our discussions earlier, kind of a threshold issue for your board to decide whether or not, in addition to the licensing scheme that we're all familiar with, whether you would find this to be an opportunity for your Milton CV license holders and Milton residents in general. So it's helpful to compare the policies that are in place in other towns. They bear a lot of similarities. Mr. Corcoran, however, pointed out, you know, one of the possible differences that you might consider. While both the, the North Borough and the, the Western models that we've been looking at do exclude the, the restaurant staff from actually participating in the service, and I suspect it has something to do probably with insurance and the possibility of liability that they were trying to avoid by keeping a hands-off kind of policy, though interesting, at least in the draft that we have, the paragraph D, for example, you know, provides some very robust requirements for restaurant staff in terms of their qualification. And I suggest that it is possible, though I do understand Mr. Corcoran's point of view, it is possible for the restaurant staffs to be qualified in the all-alcohol service, but at the same time, by way of a policy, a rule and regulation, to be restricted from the actual service. So practically speaking, if there's a patron who they see is, you know, over-serving themselves, there's the requirement of intervention. Without the, the same requirement as, you know, we have under 138, that, that the actual hand-to-hand service be only by the qualified servers. You know, it's a decision, you know, for your board to make sure you decide to pursue a policy on, on which you would prefer. The second change, and I'll make this on my own initiative, I think was indicated in your, in your draft, that it would be available to just common victual's license holders and/or club license holders. Well, I've come to find out, we don't have a club license to offer. It is, I think, on second thought, best to be available only to the CV license holders. That is, the common victuals, they obtain a privilege from your board to be licensed. If they're also permitted under this policy to allow alcohol, and something goes wrong, at least we'll have a CV license to, to hold and to, to take action against. So I would require that it be available only to common victual license, P, license holders here in Milton. With that, again, I, I suggest to you, it's kind of a two-tiered process for your board, first to determine whether or not this is right for Milton, and then second, you know, we can get into the wordsmithing, if you will. I can work with the town administrator's office to come up with a draft. I certainly can incorporate the suggestions made by the Substance Abuse Group easily into a final draft. And, you know, I think that then, you know, we would have something that you could, you could then vote, should you decide to pursue it.
Questions, comments for Mr. DeLuca?
I have a question.
Ms. Collins?
Is it possible, and I don't know about desirable, but to have a limit on the amount of alcohol that can be brought in, say, for a restaurant for two people or whatever? I, I hear Mr. Corcoran loud and clear about people carrying a case of beer in, and you're there for a meal.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm wondering if that's one measure that, that we can take, both to protect our residents and visitors, but also our business owners?
Yes. I absolutely agree that, you know, that's, while, as I said at the outset, this is not a well-developed area.
Right.
You have an opportunity to be as, as, you know, as creative as, as you feel you need to be to serve your, your public. So, yeah, absolutely, we can put something together like that.
And there are, I mean, I believe there are guidelines about what it's safe, how much is safe to drink in a given period of time, so.
Sure. You know, we can do some sort of not to exceed certain language, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, right. Okay. I mean, at least to try it out if we decide to go for it.
Ms. Collins?
I have a question for Attorney DeLuca. David, I was not at the last meeting, but I did watch the tape, and I just wanted to be sure that I took away the right understanding of the current situation. It sounded to me that what you were advising the board at the last meeting was that without a policy, anyone who, a common vittler license holder who does not have either a one-day liquor license or a full liquor license, without a policy, is able to really?
That's my understanding.
Do anything. They can have people come in and bring their own alcohol.
That's right.
I think you said anything goes, or, you know, it's the Wild West without some kind of a policy in effect.
Yeah. I did speak with the ABCC about that, and they did agree that there literally is, is no control on that presently, that it, it's up to the proprietor to decide whether or not, in the absence of a policy, to decide whether or not they would permit alcohol on their premises, and for, for a member of the public to serve him or herself. Again, a lot of it's custom and practice. We don't see it generally, and it's certainly not available on a licensed premises or, or, you know, a one-day licensed operation. So, yes, that is, that is my understanding, that it is entirely up to the proprietor to decide that, and in the absence of a policy, that at least put some guardrails on it, we could have that situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
I don't know whether we were just doing the questions at this point, or were we finished with the evidentiary?
I think we, I think, you know, absent any other questions or comments from Mr. DeLuca, then I think we can close. Unless there's anyone else who wants to be heard on this issue, we can close the evidentiary portion, and then we can, we can have a discussion. So seeing none, I will close the evidentiary portion of this, this hearing. And Ms. Conlon, if you'd like to make the first comment?
Well, I thank you to Attorney DeLuca for clarifying that. That was the big takeaway I took away, I thought, from watching the tape of the last meeting, was that without putting a policy in place, really any of these common vittler license holders who do not have a full license or a one-day license could allow someone to come in and bring their own alcohol. And we, most of our large restaurants in town do have full liquor licenses, but we do have a few restaurants, and, you know, we have the Milton Club, and we have other organizations that may hold a CV license, but without a policy in place, would have a lot of freedom to do what they would, what they would like. And I don't think any of them, I don't want to suggest that any of them have been, you know, taking advantage of that, but I think it might be worthwhile for the town to put a policy in place. I appreciated the comments that came over from Laurie Stillman from the Substance Abuse Coalition. I agree with their comments. But there's also a lot of other things in the North Borough policy that I liked, especially the policy statement at the beginning, the enforcement section, and the application procedure, because it just fleshes out some more of the details for people to consider. So I'd like to incorporate some of that into a policy, should we decide to create a policy. So I'm in favor of creating a BYOB policy, and, but would like to wrap some of the North Borough provisions into a policy we would draft, if the, if the board agrees to draft a policy.
Other comments?
I would just have to concur with everything that Ms. Conlon just said, so.
So, so it sounds like, and Attorney DeLuca, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like the threshold issue is not, do we want to allow this in Milton? It sounds like the threshold issue is, do we want to propose a policy, or do we want to enact a policy? And, or you can correct me if?
Well, it, it very well could be decided by your board that, you know, we will not permit?
I see.
BYOB in Milton.
Right. Right now, absent that decision, it's allowed.
Right now, we have a vacuum.
Right.
We have a vacuum of, and, and as a result, you know, the, the, the action could be taken. But there are towns that have consciously made a decision that, no, only license holders will be able to serve alcohol in, in their community. So you could make that decision.
Thank you. So, so then the question is, the first question is, is the board prepared, is everyone prepared to vote tonight on whether we want to consider a policy for BYOB? And then, and then I, I think it's premature to actually vote on the policy, but others may differ. So, so if, if members are comfortable voting on whether we want to consider a policy, then we can, it seems to me, you know, take the comments that we've received, both this evening and, and in writing, and propose a policy in a future meeting. So, any thoughts, comments on that course?
I agree with that course.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to, to consider a policy for bring your own bottle, bring your own bottle in Milton.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
How would we go about, would we ask Attorney DeLuca to prepare a draft for us, maybe based on some of the comments that were received tonight and from the Coalition, and maybe consider some of the North Borough, so that we would have a draft? and maybe consider some of the North Borough, so that we would have a draft for the future meeting when we consider it? How do you envision pursuing it?
I think that's the best way. You know, it occurred to me that we could delegate it to the policy committee, but it seems to me that since we've considered these comments, we've had the comments here, we've had Attorney DeLuca already present a draft policy, it seems to me, working with Attorney DeLuca to come up with a draft is probably the best way to go for the full board, rather than delegating at this point, because we've, you know, we're all involved. It's not just the policy committee. So that's, I think, Katie, I think that's the way to go.
Okay, sounds good.
I agree.
Ms. Collins?
I feel like there's really two kind of threshold questions that are being asked. Like, the first question is, absent a policy which would be restrictive, okay, as it stands right now, I was surprised to learn that it really is up to the proprietor, him or herself, to decide to allow somebody to come in and consume alcohol on their premises. And you use the term, "Mr. DeLuca Wild West," and that is, I think, an accurate sort of depiction of what it is. So absent any policy, it's really up to the proprietor. If a policy were to be put in place, I think that that's, in some ways, a good thing, because it's restrictive and it provides guidelines. And guidelines and restrictions and a path, I think, guideposts, are always good things. But the other question is, by putting that policy into place, we're then making a decision whether or not we're allowing BYOB or not allowing, okay? Absent taking a position on that question, right now, it's up to the proprietor. So I think there are two questions, really, that are being asked, and not just one.
I think, Tony, on the latter question, on whether we, that would have to be a motion to prohibit bring-your-own bottle in Milton. I think that would have to be a motion by one of the members, rather than considering a policy for BYOB, I think if someone wanted to present a motion to prohibit BYOB, then the member would say, "No, I'm opposed to a motion to consider a policy. I'm opposed to BYOB, so I'm going to oppose this motion, and if this motion doesn't succeed, I will then make a motion to prohibit BYOB in Milton." And so I think, so I think you're right. I think that is a question, but I think the question is answered if we decide to consider a policy. I mean, we could always change course.
Right, but what I'm trying to say is, by considering a policy, in a way, it's a de facto concession.
That's exactly right.
And that's what I have a problem with.
That's exactly right.
Right, so it sounds as if actually there's merit in just having a discussion about what it means to prohibit and what it means to allow. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yeah, I think so. Like I said, it comes back to the fact that Mr. DeLuca's point, I was surprised to discover that, that, you know, you can walk into Tino's with a six-pack, and if Tino says, "Yes, you can consume this in this restaurant," that's fine. So I was, that's surprising to me. I would have thought that there would be some sort of barrier in place of that, but there isn't, so.
Well, again, it's, you know, it has a lot to do with service. An unlicensed establishment would not be able to serve the public, but if the proprietor said, "Bring your own, you serve yourself," that's a possibility, yes, unless the town votes, if it, or the board votes, not to permit patrons or proprietors to allow patrons to serve themselves.
So, if that is a question that the board wants to consider and discuss, and the members want to consider and discuss, then we could table or withdraw the motion to consider a policy. So, so, motion has been made and seconded. I personally, I'm in favor of the motion to consider the policy, but it is obviously subject to the members' pleasure. So, go ahead, Tony.
So this is a thorny one, frankly, and I think the more and more we discuss it, I think the more we can drill down into the specifics of it. I'm not, generally speaking, broadly speaking, I am not in favor of a BYOB policy for businesses that have victuals licenses, licenses, that don't have licenses to serve alcohol. I don't think that that is a good thing. I'm happy to continue a discussion. So, in the very, very specific question, am I in favor of continuing a discussion or potentially adopting a policy? Sure, I'm in favor of continuing the discussion.
Okay.
But I don't think, as it stands right now, I'm not in favor of a formal BYOB policy in place.
And that's not the subject of the motion.
I understand.
Yeah, so, but if you're not comfortable voting on this motion now, I mean, you know, it's the first night, we could, we could take it up another time, if you want to, if you're not comfortable voting on a motion of whether to consider a policy, we could, you know, obviously with the members' approval, we could table that motion, because I realize, you know, this is the first night, and you might want to consider more whether you want to consider, whether you want to vote to consider a policy. So, it's really, you know, the motion is whether do we want to start the process of, or continue the process of Mr. DeLuca taking the comments and crafting a proposed policy? That's the question. Or do we want to wait? So, the motion's been made and seconded to continue the process of putting together a policy for consideration. So-
I'm in favor of the motion. I mean, one thing that I think we could also ask Attorney DeLuca to take a look at is, it was interesting that Newport Rhode Island decided as the jurisdiction that allows the restaurant to pour and to serve the alcohol. So I'd be interested in knowing if there's other communities in Massachusetts, I'm guessing there probably are, that take that approach also, and maybe we could look at those regulations, see if there's any particular language in them, other than the hours that the coalition, and the other language that the coalition suggested.
Yeah, the few that I have seen have been the hands-off type of policy, and I'm not quite certain why, though I understand from Mr. Cochrane, his experience may be a little bit different. And it does, you know, put the perma-te, in this case, kind of squarely in a zone of responsibility for the service, and really treats them no differently than chapter 138 license holders. So we can certainly investigate that a little bit further, to see if your board would have a preference one way or another. And, you know, I certainly can, you know, make that an option.
Okay, I think that's worth looking into, since that really came up for the first time tonight. The draft we had previously did not allow, or did not contemplate that.
And I'm in favor of the motion, for this reason, Tony, you're not precluded from when we consider this next, moving to preclude the bring-your-own bottle in Milton.
I understand.
Yeah, so for that, for that reason, I'm in favor of the motion. So, any other comments, questions on the motion, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we will, so Mr. DeLuca, you have your charge?
Yep, thank you.
And we will put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's see, item six, citizen speak. Do we have anyone here? We do have someone for citizen speak. If you wouldn't mind signing in and telling everybody your name and address?
My name is Steve Shay. I've come to actually thank some exceptional people that work for this town. You can know a lot about a person's character in the darkest times of someone's life. We hear the stories, we read about it, about sexual assault. Some will experience it, some will quite close to experience. Over this past spring, I'm one of those people that experienced it quite close. It was a situation that was spiraling out of control. Once the realization, it had happened at my former health club. My buddy over here, Mr. Dennehy, and I were texting one night, and he was consoling me and talking to me. And he said, "You got to file a police report." I mean, I was in no shape. I was so, like, out of it. So Mike thumped his nose and didn't listen to me. Thank you for not listening to me, because it was Mike who sent a note to Chief King. The next morning, I went to my emails around 10 o'clock, and I saw this email from John King. I'm like, "What?" I broke down and cried. It was John King reaching out, "I heard what happened. I want to help you. Let me help." The care, to this day, that he has shown me, the compassion, working through the process, saying, "When you're ready, let's talk about you," telling me what happened and get that report. I was a mess. I mean, I was just a mess. But when Richard Wells tells you to file a police report, you do it. Richard gave me the courage and the strength to file it. He also gave me some pretty good advice. I wish he was here, so I could finally thank him on this one. He said to me, "One day at a time. There is, through this ordeal, I can tell this board, I don't know how I got through a day. My life was paralyzed, the shock, the horror of it." So once he gave the marching orders, went back to Chief King, he said, "Let me get you to Dan Brown." So Dan Brown reached out to me. "That guy's awesome." It was just, he just made me feel it was going to be okay. He asked me what happened when the ordeal happened. He talked over about getting a protection order, and he took the time, you know, both, all of them, Mike, Richard, Dan, Chief, listened. They talked to me about the different options and made sure that I was okay. That was their concern, "Are you okay?" Dan reached out to Braintree where the incident occurred, talked to someone over there, they immediately reached out to me. And I went to Braintree, and I'm going to talk about this person, but I want to come back to him at the end. It's a guy named Charlie Parrish. Well, he has connection to Milton. His dad was a former deputy police chief. The guy was spectacular. He was tough. He was amazing. He sought through the facts, he told me different options. Before he left, he said, "You know, Dan was convinced we had the right, given the situation was spiraling out of control, to do a protection." He said, "Let's do an investigation." So he held off for one week. Dan gave, Charlie Parrish, I'm going to come back to in a moment, a week later, he said, "I think you've got enough. Try it. It's a hard threshold." And I was spoke, I mean, I was a raw mess. You know, you hear about these experiences, living it, there's just no, I don't know how anyone can do it. There's just, it was a nightmare. It was going on for months to get us to this point. So he wanted to decide it two days later, "That's it, I'm going to do it." So I took a half-day, and I went to court around noon time. So I get to Quincy different court, and here was Walter Timmeltay. And then that, and Walter saw me, and I was just like, "God, someone from Milton saved me." He has been beyond spectacular. From that point on, through the ordeal, he reached out, he called me, he was there for me to support me. Two judges issued the protection order. Going back to Charlie, and Dan Brown, actually, after I spoke to Charlie the first time, he spoke to me again, he reached out to Charlie and coordinated with him about different options I had, and it was just great. And he said, "Let's do it, we've got enough. This situation has to be remedied." So I left the gym, and I spoke to Charlie, and he was happy I was out of there. And I want to share what the finding were, very briefly, you know, a big overview. Charlie did an exhaustive investigation. It was very thorough. Two things that he found. First, the situation had sprung spiraling. It was a dangerous situation, the protection order was needed. The matter was criminal, the behavior was criminal that was being exhibited. But I think, and we had it, and it has to remain in effect for longer than a year. And he was very kind about it. I mean, the guy's a professional. He didn't have to do it, and he was so concerned about me, making sure I was okay. Then he talked about this, then he said, he was happy I was out of that gym, and he said, "They knowingly allowed this situation to get like this. They never had an intention of ever stopping this behavior." All I can say is how lucky I am to Mike Dennehy, Richard Wells, Chief King, Dan Brown, Charlie Parrish, had they not stepped in, God only knows what that guy would have done to me next. I know I'm lucky. How anyone could knowingly allow this, and we question about why could this happen? How could people just sit there and let it? I think this goes to the times we live in. The answer was simple. The person who was doing to me had emotional problems. Some in that gym facility used him as a vehicle to bully me, in the most horrific way anyone could do it. We live in a culture of bullying. Kids go back next week, we know they're bullied, because adults bullying. I never thought I'd be sitting here to say, "It came quite close to a sexual assault." We need to wake up on this. How anyone could allow this behavior to go on to say, "It's okay," and knowingly allow it, it's unconscionable. But I think society's got to ask ourselves, how many more victims, if this can happen to me, who else can it happen? I got so lucky, because you have got a phenomenal police chief, a phenomenal sergeant in Dan Brown, a dad who is a deputy here, raised an exceptional detective son, an amazing town administrator, Walter Timmeltay Richard. The next person won't be, or the kid in school may not be, won't be, walked that lucky from bullying. So my plea tonight is to say special thanks to these amazing people. You came to me, you didn't even know me, most of you. You helped me out in my darkest hour for that, from the bottom of my heart. I thank you. But let this be a wake-up call. This didn't need to happen, and knowing that it was done deliberately, and it could have been prevented, we got to ask ourselves, why is it always happening? And it's happening now as we speak, and I just hope this is a wake-up call to others in Milton. Let's have a conversation about bullying, and let's have the maturity to talk about mental illness, because it was people's emotional problems that got us to this point. I'm a survivor, I'm back on top. Hell, I'm going to Europe in a few weeks as reward for this ordeal. I wish I never lived it, and I wish I wasn't here tonight, but special thanks to the people of the town. Michael, you thumb your nose at me in my darkest moment, thanks from the bottom of my heart. You did something that I couldn't have done by going to Chief King. If you didn't do it, I don't think I would have had the guts. Thank you for a lot, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shay. Certainly thank you to Mr. Dennehy, Mr. Wells, all the town officials who helped out. Thank you for sharing, and thank you for your courage, Mr. Shay. Anyone else for citizen speak? All right, we will move on to item seven, Mr. Mulcahy for Mike's 5K. Is that right? Yes.
Right.
That's right. All right.
Thank you all for-
Do you want to just introduce yourself, to make sure everybody knows who you are?
All right, my name is John Mulcahy, and I'm the race director and president of Mike's 5K to Crush Substance Abuse, which is going to have its third 5K this October 19th here in Milton. I just want to thank you, Mr. Zulus, and all the board for inviting me to address you this evening. You guys have been really outstanding in your support, and as I was saying, our 5K this year is on October 19th. Just to give you guys a little bit of an introduction, we started this in 2017. My brother grew up in Milton, my brother Mike Mulcahy, and I grew up in Milton, as I said, and he was very proud of his Milton roots. And unfortunately, on December 1st of 2016, he passed away after a 10-year battle against substance abuse. So in the wake of his passing, our family decided, with a group of friends, that we wanted to do something positive and constructive, and really keep his spirit alive. And Milton made sense to do this, because he loved Milton so much, and he was so proud of his Milton roots. And we wanted to do something that was going to be constructive, get people outside, doing a 5K, feeling good about themselves, because really, in his own experience in fighting his addiction, working out and physical activity was really very helpful to his wellness. So we put our heads together and had no idea what the heck we were doing, but we certainly had a lot of energy and enthusiasm, and our first 5Ks, I'm sure you all know, was in 2017, and we really blew it out of the park. I mean, we didn't expect it to be nearly as successful as it's been. We donated $55,000 in that first year, and we had about 450 runners and walkers, and dogs, and kids. You all should know, and everyone here should know, that it's a totally family-friendly event, and people- and, um, people of all abilities are welcome to, uh, participate. So, then last year in 2018, we exceeded our expectations again. And I really want to put a shout out to the family of Mike, Mike Jessen. Michael was another son of Milton who unfortunately in 2017, right before our race, lost his battle against, um, drug addiction. And the Jessen family, um, which is very involved in the town. Uh, Bob Jessen runs an accounting firm here in Milton. They came out and they got on our team and they wrote, raised a ton of money for us. So, last year, we donated seventy-five thousand dollars to five different organizations. The Milton Coalition, I'm so happy to hear about their involvement in that other, um, the BYOB policy that you were talking about because the Milton Coalition's been phenomenal. Um, we've donated lots of money to the Milton Coalition and it's been a great relationship. Um, and when I say the Coalition, I obviously mean the Substance Abuse Coalition. It's been a great relationship for us because it's really been mutually beneficial. They have been hugely supportive of all the efforts that, um, we, we, um, have made. And really, the town has been, I mean, from Mr. Dennehy, the Selectman's Office, the town has been outstanding. The, the Chief of Police, we have a ton of our volunteers, our student volunteers from Milton High School. Um, Cunningham Park Town Hall has been great. Collycott School, Cunningham School, custodial staff. I mean, it runs the gamut. This has really been so successful because so many people have gotten on board. And we hope that, I mean, we all know money makes a difference, that the money that we're raising really makes a difference in people's lives here in Milton and beyond through the money that we're giving to the Coalition and beyond. But also, I think importantly, we're trying to raise awareness about this problem and invite people to talk about it because there's a lot of shame surrounding addiction and substance abuse. And our whole message is, "It doesn't have to be that way." Um, we want to get rid of the stigma that surrounds it and we want to create a conversation. The other thing I wanted to let you all know is our Board of Directors, because now we're a 501(c)(3), um, has, uh, made the decision this year that we're gonna donate fifteen thousand dollars from what we raised this year to help with the establishment of the youth center here in town. So, we're really proud of that. And, uh, again, I think that, you know, for people like my brother and kids like Mike Jessen that grew up in this town, um, they're really proud of us too, that we're now taking this money that we're raising, reinvesting it in the town and, um, helping out, you know, the next person. Whether that's someone that's going through an addiction problem or helping young people to know that they can make positive, healthy choices and, um, they don't have to use to have, you know, a meaningful life. So, I've gone on probably way too long, but I really appreciate all of you guys inviting me to speak. And really, from the bottom of my heart and everyone who's involved in Mike's Five K, including my mother who is in the audience, she's probably embarrassed that I, um, did a shout out. Um, thank you for all your support.
So, John.
Yes.
Saturday, October nineteenth.
Yes.
Ten AM, Cunningham, Collycott. How do people, um, register, donate, get involved?
Thank you. Yeah. So, um, the registration is at mikesfivek.racewire.com. And so, if you want to register, you can register on there. It's thirty dollars a person. If you register by October one, you get a free T-shirt, all right? And Mr. Zulus, I know that's why you come to our races.
No, I come, I come because last year, Mr. Barrington beat me and he's not gonna beat me this year. That's why I-
You can't let that happen.
We know something about running against each other.
That's right. That's right.
That's where to register. You can donate on fundraiser.com. And if you go on there and just search for Mike's Five K, you can donate there. And then the third thing, and really the fact of the matter is, we raise so much money because we have so many businesses support us, is we're always looking for sponsorship. So, um, I, uh, we're always looking for sponsorship. And I'll put it out there too, if people want to get involved in other ways by volunteering, joining our committee, uh, my email is mulcahyjt, so M-U-L-C-A-H-Y-J-T at gmail dot com. But again, I can't really say it enough. Thank you.
Maybe we can put that on the website or, you know, put a notice on the website.
Yeah, we, we tend to promote it on the website and through Twitter and Facebook and all that stuff once, but we'll, we'll put it out tomorrow.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
And, and I would like to mention Emily Martin, who is the executive secretary, uh, prior to Jen, um, was also a, a leading advocate for, for the Mike's, Mike's Five K and would come here. It's Citizen Speak and promote it to people, so.
Yeah, and Emily was really like very critical in helping us get the ball rolling because I remember calling her at Town Hall and she kind of walked me through the process, so. Yeah, so.
Great. Questions, comments?
Just thank you very much. It's a great event.
Yeah. I hope you all can make it.
It's in my calendar.
So, what's that?
It said, "It's in my calendar."
Oh, great.
Um, and, and I want to say an extra special thank you for thinking of the youth center. Um, because prevention, as you said, making those good choices and letting people know that they can do that is powerful. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, it's a great, it's a wonderful event, John. Congratulations. I know the numbers are growing year in, year after year. And I knew your brother growing up and he was a great kid and, and he was very well-liked. And, uh, a lot of people miss him. And, and this is a wonderful way to, to honor his memory. It's a wonderful tribute. And it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful race too. And in addition of Mike and I running, I believe Jennifer ran last year and she did a fantastic job. So, uh, we'll all be out there again this October.
All right, great. Thank you guys so much and thanks for your nice comments.
John, on the youth center, um, you may want to connect with the Youth Task Force. Uh, Sarah Callian is the chair of that, so we should just connect you with her, just so you can coordinate.
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Thanks, John.
Thanks, everyone. Great seeing you guys.
Item eight, Sean Roach, waiting patiently to talk about the East Milton Deck.
How are you all doing?
Very well. Hi, Sean.
Uh, that's a great thing to follow, John, there. Sorry for your loss. Maybe if we get something like this approved, we wouldn't have, uh, some new Mike's out there in the world with substance abuse problems.
John, if you just want, I mean, Sean, if you just want to introduce yourself.
Sure, Sean Roach. Um, Glendale Road. I have a sixteen, fourteen, and ten-year-old in the town. We've lived in the town about nineteen years now. So, um, basically about five weeks ago, reached out to Mike Dennehy, uh, with this idea I had for the East Milton Deck. Basically for a place to go. For teens, there's another option besides the woods to go drinking. And, um, my son, thank God, is, uh, one of the kids in town who's trying to make the tough decision not to go drinking in the woods and his friends. And I see it every day. And, um, I know when I was younger, um, we really have a lot of options like that, so I'd really like to give them this idea I came up with. That's another place to go for them to hang out socially, interact with other like-minded teens. Um, I'd like to thank Mike for meeting me right away. Like, I emailed Mike. He came out the next day, spent an hour with me out there. We're the only people on the deck. I don't know if any people are familiar with Manning Park. A lot of people aren't. I've brought over a dozen people down there. Uh, I said, "Meet me at Manning Park." Eleven out of the twelve people had no idea where it was. It's the center of our town. Every time I went there, I spent probably forty to sixty hours there. I was the only person there except the person I was meeting to show my ideas about the park. There was one guy that walked through briefly. And every time I go by, there's nobody there. I think we can all agree with that, that we can make a better use out of this park for everyone. So, I came up with this plan. Um, I don't know if you want to run through the PowerPoint. It's okay if I get up or?
Yeah, please. I don't know if you can maybe take the, Sean, maybe take one of the microphones with you so that people can hear you.
I have a pointer too.
Oh, okay. Great.
Just moves around?
Yeah, just watch the cord. Just take, pick it up and-
Walk it over where I'm doing it?
Yeah, maybe come up here, up through here. Oh, you know what you can do?
I was gonna say.
Take this one. Take this one.
So, basically, what I like to do is, um, came up with the idea of making a wiffle ball field, Fenway Park replica, which could act as, um, an amphitheater, a place to watch outdoor movies. And in the wintertime, we can flood it and use it as a skating rink. And then the Green Monster would be this Adam Street that we never used. It's blocked off that is completely useless space, which we would call Lansdowne Street, which I came up with the idea for having vending ping pong tables, old classic cars like an old drive-in, and, um, basically cornhole chess tables, kind of picture the Emerald Necklace and, um, bringing that down to Milton. Like, everyone else is going to Boston, they go into like the fountains and all the Ferris wheels and all the stuff they have down there. But I'm thinking, "Why can't we have it right here in our own town?" So, there's obviously that big project, three million dollar project going on, the federal project, which will be improving the area around it, correct? And, um, in the short term, we talked about doing a two-phase thing, just getting the street up and running to see how it goes. And then work through with the federal project and the town to hopefully approve the rest of the park and whatever ideas anyone else might have. I have a team of some people behind the scenes working on it, uh, kind of like a band of silent assassins, ready to go. Um, bought an ice cream truck. We have some vending stuff from Fenway. I have a, a guy who does skating rinks working on how to get it done. They're all Milton people. They're business owners. I met with the Chamber of Commerce, the, the, uh, the president and the comments were, uh, so far, they really liked it because in, in my view, we're not taking away from the restaurants down there. I'm thinking more like the parents are dropping the kids off there and going to Avenue Park, going to the restaurants down there. And the kids are going to Milton House of Pizza and instead of just sitting around and no place to go, they bring the pizza down to the park and actually hang out with each other. You know, instead of just being buried in their phones or drinking in the woods. So, we could probably do like food trucks, uh, ice cream trucks. I was thinking we wouldn't do anything to upset the Chamber of Commerce people like, "No, I wouldn't do Chinese food trucks." I probably was thinking like, "We don't have any Mexican. We don't have any barbecue." So, I wouldn't want to step on anyone's toes like that. Just give people another option. Other than that, I'm ready to go, so let's vote. You good, Katie?
All right. Well, it's worth, worth thinking about, Sean.
Sean, why don't you go back there and, uh, why don't you go back there? Unless you want to take over. All right, so, uh-
Fire away.
Questions, comments, uh, from the members?
Could we do it?
Ms. Collins.
Could we do a test?
Sure.
I don't know. And you're saying yes?
Yeah, so i- if I might, so I, I, I met Sean, uh, about five weeks ago. He reached out and we made a, uh, immediate interaction down at, uh, the, the square. Um, subsequently, he met with, uh, town engineer John Thompson and DPW Chase Berkeley, who enlightened him, you know, about the ins and outs of the projects and what was coming this way. Subsequently, met with Chair Zulus and, uh, former Chair Wells, uh, just to go over his ideas. I have to thank Sean for bringing this to everyone's attention. Um, obviously, the theme tonight is kind of heading this way, not on purpose, but, um, he has some very good ideas for, for what to do with this space down there. He's followed through. He's talked to, uh, Howard Stan Hudson, who the engineer is leading the, um, the federal project that's coming, which was recently advertised two weeks ago. He's aware of, of what's coming down the pike with respect to the construction that's gonna be taking place. But, um, he's also aware that that might be something that we can do in the short term to just kind of put some amenities down there and, and, and make it, um, somewhat programmable or, or more of a destination, um, for the youth in our town. So, I, I, I credit Sean fully. He's, he's been running through, running all these, uh, schematics and architectural plans himself. Um, he's open to suggestions. He's very willing to listen and, and follow through on things. So, in, in five weeks' time, I've really gotten to know him peripherally and, and he, he's really into this. And I, I think he's, he's, he might be on to something here with respect to, um, what, what we're hearing tonight is, is, is a theme in town with things to do for, for kids.
Sean, maybe you could tell the board what your thought is in terms of timing?
Tomorrow's good.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking in reality, like, when the kids get back to school, have something ready for them.
So, that would be next Wednesday?
Uh, probably the following weekend.
Okay, so maybe the-
Nine, seven, maybe set it up, nine, six, nine, seven.
The week after, the week of, week of Labor Day week?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so that's what you're thinking. Uh, other questions, comments from the members?
I guess I have a question in terms of short-term, what you're thinking of setting up for the week after next. Just because this is the first, I've heard of it tonight and seen this tonight, so.
So, basically, what you see in the pictures there, um, pretty much a row of classic cars. There's a drive-in movie, like an old, old-style classic cars with chairs in front of it, sixteen-foot movie screen for outdoor movies. I have two ping pong tables, two cornhole setups. I have a giant chess setup. I have Giant Connect Four. I have Giant Jenga. I have an ice cream truck. I have an Army Jeep, nineteen forty-five, an Army Cannon. You can stop me anytime.
So, you have all of these things that are in your sketchings? You have all of this equipment and these items are all ready?
And I have vending equipment from Fenway Park.
I, I mean, it's an, it's an interesting idea. I, I think it's worth exploring. It's always been a passive park and there's a lot of noise there. Have you given some thought to the noise and the, the potential air quality issues there where you're right over the, a very busy highway?
I would assume that, uh, one of those studies have been done when you did the, the test, uh, on the town, like when they were for the, uh-
Well, there is just a lot of noise.
Traffic study?
There's a lot of noise, so, um, you know, I think that's just a given.
You think it's too noisy?
Well, that's really my question. Is it too noisy for something like this?
Well, I've actually printed out synonyms for the word passive. And, uh, apathetic, indifferent, quiet, static, uninvolved, idle, long-suffering, asleep, docile, going through the motions, motionless, sleepy, unassertive, walking through it. I left out the big words for Mike. So, if it's a passive park you want, I mean, you're running the best one in America. But I think it's an opportunity to get people active in our town and teenagers in our town.
Yeah, well, I'm just, just want to clarify that. I'm not suggesting it should be passive. I'm stating that the history of it has been a passive park. And from what I understand from the former town administrator, John Cronin, the intent at the time, the early nineties, was for it, the reason they planted the trees there rather than having a lot of open area, was for it to be kind of a passive-type park that people would walk through, maybe sit there for a little while, but there wasn't a lot of activity planned for it. It was more aesthetic purposes to kind of break up the square and the canyon of the highway. So, that's been its history. My, my, it's really a question that I'm asking because we've been talking about this deck for several years.
Yeah.
As you know, there was an opportunity, a proposal to put parking there. Um, and then there's, since we wanted to preserve Adam Street to eventually be open at some point, if that should be the direction that the town needs down the road, could be a long time down the road. We talked about maybe some use of that section of Adam Street for something like this or, or food trucks or maybe holiday celebrations that, so it's more of a question than I ask of you. Is it, is it, would you be planning daytime or just nighttime activities? And is, are there certain times of the day that you think it might work better than others? Or, or is the noise an issue or not there for the type of activities for teens?
I think it would be more of, uh, it can be used for many purposes, but I think it would be more from after school. Maybe not so late on the school nights because, you know, we want them doing their sports and homework and everything. But, uh, I could see like Friday night, letting them go there till eleven. Uh, whatever, whatever, you know, how long teenagers want to stay too. But a lot of the stuff will be there all the time. Like, you can go down and play ping pong anytime you want. You can play chess anytime you want. You can play cornhole anytime you want. Um, it's kind of up to them, like, pretty much know like teenagers don't want chaperones, like that's the reason they go in the woods, like, so. In my mind, I kind of want to leave them alone and see how they do. Sometimes they need a chance to do, do the right thing too, not just the wrong thing. And, um, give them something positive and see what they do with it. At least give it a chance, you know?
Ms. Collins.
Has anyone?
Can I just, um, can you just take that microphone over there? We got all screwed up with the microphone.
All right, sorry.
It was probably my fault. Sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. Has there been any discussion with Chief King?
No, no. Just, the idea was to bring Sean's ideas to this board first and, and present and- No, no, just, the idea was to bring Sean's ideas to this board first and present and...
Yeah, as I said, I'd be interested in a test, depending upon what Chief King says.
Sure.
You have everything, it sounds like, I said, it sounds as if you have everything, so it's worth, I think it could be a good test for a lot of things actually, because people don't tend to use the park, and it can be very noisy, so it would be good to see if it would work, and really, we just needed amenities there to get people, you know, young people there, I don't know.
And I think a lot of the concerns we heard when we went through the whole public hearing process with the DEC project was, a lot of people felt unsafe with Brian Av and Granite Av being almost major thoroughfare, so that was something that we talked about with Sean, and something that he's given thought to and would work through, but, because it is, it's, there is some concern about the speeds that are carried on Granite, Brian, as people commute to and from and through the town.
And kids, roughhousing, which is, you know, what we do when we're young, and that's a good thing, and just, you know, that's the only thing, I'd just be curious about what Chief King has to say and...
For safety, yeah, I agree.
Other comments, questions?
Sean, first of all, thank you for thinking creatively. Frequently, people come to us with criticisms and complaints, which is only natural, it's human nature, but they stop there, and they don't offer up a solution, whatever that solution might be, they don't take it to the next step and say, have you thought of this, have you thought of that? I think anything that you do to jumpstart activity in this park is a good thing. Portions of this frankly, might be unrealistic or unfeasible. I'm in support, well, a couple things, let's clear up a couple things, you have all of these items, this equipment?
I do.
Okay, so it's in your possession, it's not costing us anything?
The town will not have any cost for this.
And you can transport it down there and place it there?
Have you seen the green truck?
I haven't seen the green truck.
It's already there.
Okay, okay, so you have these items that you're proposing in your possession, you can transport them there. I'm not in favor of leaving them there indefinitely, I think if we gave you a twenty-four hour or forty-eight hour window, okay, frankly, the shorter the better. You'd have to promote it too, I think, in order to get people to go, it would, I think that's very, very important.
Yeah.
And I think you understand that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anything I think you can do or try to do to showcase this parcel and get people to go there?
Yeah.
Is a good thing.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of having a ping pong table out there for weeks at a time, or days at a time.
You're not going to ping pong?
Because, I'll tell you what's going to happen.
The ball's going to go on the street?
We're going to get roughly a thousand, fifteen hundred phone calls from people saying, we got a ping pong table in the middle of Town Green in Milton, so I'm just thinking, these are things that happen, right? So for every, for every, for every action, there's a reaction, okay? So, I like this idea, it's wonderful, it's creative, it's outside the box, but we need to, we need to drill down and figure out the duration of it, I think.
Okay.
How long it's going to be.
Well, I don't think twenty-four or forty-eight hours is very realistic.
Okay.
I was thinking more like a year.
A year?
Yeah.
So you want to, you want to put all these items there at once?
I was thinking like fifty years personally, but...
Sure, all right.
Forty-eight hours isn't going to do it?
Let's do it for a weekend.
Nah.
No?
Longer.
Right.
It's going to cost small fortune to get the stuff there.
I understand that, I understand that.
Oh, she wants to help me?
If you put this together, I will beat the drum, and I'll get down there and I'll bring people there.
I'll put it together, you'll be, I already got everyone lined up.
I'm not going to sign off on anything for longer than a weekend, frankly, I'm not going to do that, because the following week, we'll have three people saying, you turn the town square into God knows what, and it's just, it's, believe me, it's a recipe for potential problems.
More than forty-eight hours, is it?
Yes, I believe that.
I don't really understand that point of view, but you're entitled to it?
Well, you've never held elective office either, I don't think.
No, I wouldn't want to.
So, take me when I tell you that there's a, there's a strong chance of that happening, so, I like this idea.
You want to point all the phone calls at me? Did you get?
Sean, I'm trying to work with it, I'm trying to work with it, okay? I like this idea, I think it, at its most fundamental, it's a good idea.
Okay.
May I ask another question?
Ms. Conlin.
Sean, are you proposing to use just right now for the short term, the immediate closed section of Adam Street? Because the designs that appear on our screens show the future plan, which will have some more open space, right now, it's a lot of trees and raised planters, so are you talking just the closed portion of the roadway?
Yeah, because of the project that's coming up, we didn't want to get into all that, because we need to work with the project, which is more important, you know?
So it sounds like you have...
But I could put ping pong tables inside there, I mean, they're movable, they're very easy.
So it sounds like you have a lot of equipment, you think that that can fit, everything that you've mentioned, all those different items?
Yeah.
Can fit into the closed portion of the roadway, are you talking about showing movies there?
Sure, yeah.
I would suggest putting together something in the way of a plan that we can review.
That's right behind you.
Other than a visual aid, which you've provided, which is great.
Okay.
Which is great, Sean, I'm trying to work with you.
Okay.
I'm not trying to stifle your plan, I'm not trying to thwart it, I'm trying to give you suggestions as to how this can best succeed.
Okay. What more did you want from behind you then?
Other questions, comments? So I will say that I am very much in favor of this, let me suggest a couple of things. And I think, I think this is the kind of initiative that we want to foster and not choke off. We have a private citizen who wants to put his own money behind trying to improve the town center, and so I think we should do everything we can to encourage that and to help it along, and I think, I think everyone's committed to that. Let me suggest a couple of things, one, I think Melinda raises a good point in terms of getting public safety to sign off and consulting with Chief King. Two, I think we need to consult with town council just about any potential liability, I don't think there's anything there, but we just need to make sure, and maybe it'll require you to get insured.
Yeah, I'm expecting to have to do that.
Yeah, so we should coordinate with town council about insurance and liability issues, and we'll connect you with him.
And is it a permit, or how does it work?
Well, that's a question about what our authority is here, that's the next question of town council, is what our authority is, right?
Right.
What our decision point will be, will it be, Sean, you can put X, Y, Z there for a weekend or three months, you know, whatever it is, and so, so that's the next thing, so coordinate with public safety and Chief King, coordinate with town council on liability and the decision points, and I'm not, I'm not saying this is going to take a long time, Sean.
Yeah, it all makes sense, yeah, I was expecting that, yeah.
Right, and, you know, to Tony's point, maybe if, if, you know, in addition to the visual aid, there's kind of a plan of, okay, we're going to have two ping pong tables, and I'm sure it's all there, but if you just kind of write it down, some people are less visual and they're more, they want to see the words, so the narrative, so we're going to have two ping pong tables, we're going to have a, we're going to have a screen, we're going to have, we're going to have picnic tables, we're going to have a, whatever it is, we're going to have the ice cream truck, they're all weather, we don't have to take them out if it rains, there, you know, there are no issues there, and we think, you and those others you're working with, we think that it's important for a test period for us to have at least X amount of time, you know, a weekend won't do it, fair, you know, point, Tony is concerned about it being longer, maybe you'll come back a week from now, or on September fourth, and say, and say, I need three months to prove this concept, you know, or I need, you know, three weeks to prove this concept, so I think that's the kind of, maybe that's the kind of plan that Tony is thinking about, and then if you can, you know, tie up those ends and come in and say, okay, X, Y, Z, and Melinda has something to offer, because I'm dominating the conversation, I apologize, go ahead, Melinda.
No, you're, thank you for being so clear about all of this, and we actually had somebody come before us who was looking to be a parks commissioner, who might be able to give us a little guidance on what a good test period for something like this is, or we might be able to get that information from our town planner or someone, because tests like this are done all the time to see what amenities work, and so, you know...
I may not have it right the first time either, we'll have to adjust.
Right, so, but I mean, you know, obviously, I like the steps that you outlined, so if we start at the top, I would hate for this to get, because it is such a nice idea, I would hate for us to get, do things out of order, and then find out for some reason that the police chief sees problems that we don't see at the moment, so...
I think it is great that the fire department's right there too, for that reason.
Right, and there another one we should check was...
I actually met with them the other day, they think it's a pretty cool idea.
Great, great.
They weren't really into the bonfire idea I mentioned, sorry.
Okay.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
So you've carved back the...
I did, I didn't bring up the bonfire at all, did I?
No fire.
All right, so, so Tony...
Just a forty-eight hour bonfire.
So, Tony, if we, if Sean comes back with that kind of plan that I kind of suggested, is that kind of where you were going in terms of...
Yeah, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
All right, so, go ahead, Melinda.
Well, if there are particular things, maybe that, questions that we have, could we forward them to Mr. Dennehy and then he, okay?
And my information is on the packet too, if anyone has a question that pops in their head, feel free to shout it out.
Right, something that, if we, if there's something we really want to see in the written down proposal, okay?
Sure, and I forgot to mention, we did discuss flooding the street for ice skating, because that's a big thing, people have been talking about, that I'm like, places to ice skate, we talked about possibly doing that for the winter, just something to throw out there too, to keep it going. You know, hot chocolate, places to go ice skating.
Did that question come up when you met with John Thompson?
Who's John Thompson?
The engineer.
Oh, I don't know if we talked about it that day.
No.
Yeah.
Certainly something that would have to be vetted through Howard Stan Hudson, just to make sure that...
Oh, for weight?
Without weight.
Yeah, yeah. I'm assuming if all those cars and everything, and I don't know, do you guys plow it every winter now, do you go over the mulch and plow it?
They do.
They do, okay. Yeah, definitely something to look into, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd have to talk with the state about that as well, just in terms of the, any impact on the infrastructure there, but the air rights agreement is worth having town council take a look at to see if there's any restrictions in that, so I agree with the chair's suggestions that we should vet this a little more, send town council, but I, I would support some kind of experimental period here as well, it is a creative idea, Sean, and thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
And have you talked with the youth task force about this idea?
I didn't, but I got...
I think they may find it interesting.
Kathy, was it?
No, it's Sarah Callahan, hasn't met in the last few, since this came up.
Yeah.
A few weeks ago, so, so we'll connect you with Sarah as well.
I got her info yesterday, so I haven't talked to her yet.
Good, yeah.
Cheryl, the guys.
Okay, so, so you want to get going in September, you want to get going soon after the school starts, so, given that, I think we should try to, you know, move this forward as quickly as possible, and put this on for September fourth, and see, you know, see how much progress we've made with, progress we've made with the chief, with town council, with kind of a narrative of, here's the initial plan, you know, give me, you know, two months to prove this concept, or whatever it is, or a month to prove this concept, or a weekend, whatever, to prove the concept, and then off we go.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
All right, anything else, any other questions or concerns or thoughts?
No, just thanks for taking the time to listen, that's it.
Thanks, Sean, it's great, and thanks for doing it, thanks for, thanks for putting your money where your mouth is and your effort where your mouth is, it's really, it's really great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you, Sean. Item nine, this is discussion and, discussion and consideration of a letter to the U.S. Department of Transportation about a new proposed rule, which is being proffered by the FAA, the Federal, Federal Aeronautics Administration?
Aviation.
Aviation Administration, sorry, the night's getting, it's getting late, it's getting late early. Federal Aviation Administration, proposed regulations for, as we understand it, additional potential use of flight authorizations for supersonic jets, and I'm going to let Ms. Conlin take this, sum and substance is, the FAA has proposed regulations for additional authorizations for supersonic operations, and there is a comment period that ends on August twenty-seventh for this, and in talking with ANAC, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee at our last meeting, we thought that particularly, given the burden that this town is suffering under with respect to NextGen, and the fact that the FAA has not done anything to remedy that burden, that to add to that burden with additional supersonic, supersonic operations would just be not a good thing for this town, so Katie, you can take it, because Katie is really taking, taken the laboring oar on preparing a letter in opposition to these regulations, so, Katie, I probably butchered that whole thing, but you can fix it.
No, I mean, I think you've summed it up well, Mr. Chair, so, there's not a lot more that I can add, other than this issue was brought up by the Andy Schmidt, the chair of the ANAC, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee at our meeting last week, we recognize that we had a short timeframe in which to try to prepare something and submit it by the twenty-seventh, so we have a draft, it has gone to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, we did receive two comments from them today, mostly about one word on page three, we wanted to change the word add to increase in section two, and then just about some of the CCs, whether we need to include additional parties on the CC list, we didn't really receive substantive comments, so essentially, the letter objects for the reason that the chair stated that the FAA hasn't yet solved NextGen, which is a problem that it created, and we've been, we and many other communities around the country have been looking for a solution for a number of years, so before we start talking about supersonic jets and more noise, even if it's in the area just of testing rather than actual operation, we're asking that, that the NextGen situation be addressed before anything else is considered in the way of supersonic travel. So that's, the letter is generally a general opposition based on that ground, and then some specific objections to certain things that are in the regulations, such as making sure that testing is over the ocean before it's over land, nighttime operations, duration of authorization, trying to create a bright line test, they also, the FAA had asked for public comment on a regulation, part of the regulation that would allow flights, not for testing purposes but for operation, to be considered outside the testing area, and they asked, given that we haven't had any of these types of aircraft applied for in the United States or in operation, obviously, the Concorde has ended its operations, they are asking whether their nineteen seventy-three regulations still made sense, so in this letter, we've taken the position that they should remove it, and at the appropriate time, if success, if successful testing happens, then a new regulation could be written at the time based on current, the current situation, in fact, and we point out right at the beginning that there's been a lot of change in aviation operations since this rule went into effect in nineteen seventy-three, the fleet mix is much larger, there's more airlines, the volume of flights have increased, and of course, NextGen has concentrated the flight paths. So this, this letter was really a comment letter that we would propose to file, if the board agrees to file this by August twenty-seventh, and also to send copies of it with a cover letter to our congressional delegation, asking them to weigh in on whether supersonic aircraft operations is something that's in the best interest of the nation, including all the affected communities by NextGen, and also to ask them to involve the Environmental Protection Agency in evaluating impacts on the environment, and not just to leave that to the FAA. So unfortunately, we got this letter out to everyone, I think only this morning, I know not everyone has had a chance to really look at it closely, but we only heard about this last week, it took a while to draft it, and we're under a short timeframe, as usual, on these types of things, and this, all these letters that we write and file with respect to airplane noise issues, we always seem to be on a tight timeframe.
So we have before us a five-page letter with the general opposition and also the specific... also the specific, um, specific comments on the proposed, uh, the regulation proposed by the FAA, and then separately, we have a one-page letter, one-page cover letter to Senators Warren, Markey, and Representatives Lynch and Presley. So, um, uh, our hope is that, uh, that, that we can consider this and vote on this tonight, but, you know, as Katie pointed out, it was a short timeframe, so, questions, comments?
Um, I just wanna say, I think that the letter's excellent, um, and I really appreciate, um, Katie, you wrote this?
Mike had input into it, and we sent it out to a number of people.
Well, thank you to, to everyone who worked on this, I thought it was clear, I understood instantly everything that was being said, um, and, uh, so, I just had a question in the, the first line, really of the, the second paragraph, there's a, after authorization period, there's a space, and then it references the, the regulation, and I just didn't know quite what that meant, um...
That, um, that regulation is just where the, the prohibition is, without the FAA authorizing it, so that's just the, the site and the reg, the federal regulations to that sentence.
Oh, okay, so should there, I mean, not to be too picky, but, um, I, I just didn't understand, 'cause there was a period there, I mean, that was my assumption, but my assumption is correct.
Maybe we'll just say, please see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or something, um, so, and, um, I, I think that's really it. So I'm, I'm ready to vote on this.
All right, um, so, are we ready to vote?
Yes, I trust Katie's judgment in these matters, she's very well versed in this issue, and, uh, it is a very thorough and well-drafted letter, and I like the headers, and it's, uh, it's got a great flow to it, and it reads very, very well, so, good work.
Well, thank you, the, um, the Chair had some input into it also, so it was just me.
Indeed, yes, Mike's very well versed in this, in this issue as well, so I, I defer to you both, I trust your judgment in these matters, and I'm, uh, in full support of it.
All right, then I'll move that we approve in substantially the form presented tonight, a comment letter to the U.S. Department of Transportation regarding the FAA's proposed regulations on supersonic flight operations, and to submit copies of the letter to our congressional delegation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, all right, thank you. Um, I see Steve O'Donnell out there, Steve, uh, do you, um, uh, we could go into, um, uh, our Governor Stoughton meeting just for the purposes, so you can, you can get out of here, I, if, if, if the members don't mind doing that, Steve might be here a little longer than he needs to be if we, he ju, he just wants to weigh in on the town farm demolition, so, so what I'd ask is if we could suspend, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the, uh, the select board meeting, uh, to return after we consider an issue as the Governor Stoughton trustees.
Second.
Still moved.
It's been, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so our meeting of the Milton Select Board is suspended, and I will call to order our meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees, and we will move to item two, which is a discussion, uh, slash approval of the town barn demolition, and, um, uh, maybe we'll ask Mr. Dennehy to kinda, uh, bring us up to speed, uh, on where we are on this, is that, does that make sense?
Sure, yeah, so, uh, must be a week ago now, Steve, right? We all, we all walked up to the site, uh, in constant contact with, uh, Joe Prandak, who's been, um, on this issue for a lot longer than I've been here. Um, I believe there was some paperwork passed around that dates it all the way back to two thousand and seven, uh, when there was an issue found with the structure of, of the barn at the town farm, so, um, group of us went up a week ago, uh, to take a look at the existing, um, state of that barn, and I think the unanimous consensus was that the, the barn, um, needed, needed to come down. Um, we invited Steve as the representative of the Historical Commission for his input, um, and we'll, and we'll get to that, uh, but Joe Prandak was in attendance, Chair Zulus, uh, Select, Vice Chair Collins, myself, Joe Prandak, Mr. O'Donnell, um, and basically just walked the site to take a look at, at, um, not anticipating that the existing condition had gotten better in twelve years, um, and what we saw was a building that was, uh, dilapidated to the point where it, it may come down on its own, um, with, with, at any chance, so. Um, Mr. Prandak has been soliciting quotes, um, to take a look at, at the demolition of that building, um, subsequently, uh, the discussion, um, talked about possibly boarding up the other windows, the other two houses up there, so that they also may not, um, decelerate as quickly as, as we saw the, the barn, um, once these roofs and windows get open, um, so that, that was the discussion, Mr. O'Donnell, if you wanna just weigh in on?
Yeah, so before Steve, uh, before you go, Steve, I, I, let me just add, um, uh, a couple of things. One, um, uh, there was a support, um, put up, I think ten years ago, is that, was that ten years ago? The support to prevent the barn from falling down is now rotting itself. Um, the barn's gonna come down, it's, uh, it's overgrown, it needs to be demolished, otherwise it's gonna, it's a hazard. Uh, town council has, um, has informed us that, uh, their opinion is that we can use, um, Governor Stoughton funds to, um, to eliminate this hazard and to, uh, protect our asset up there, which is the, the four acres, um, and to protect the Governor Stoughton trustees and the Governor Stoughton Trust from liability, if there was an issue, uh, with that, so, so, uh, so we do have approval from town council, they, they advise us that it's okay to use Governor Stoughton funds. We want to include, we wanted to make sure the Historical Commission, um, didn't have any issues, uh, because these are all, um, historical buildings, in some sense, and so, so Steve joined us a week ago Monday, when we went up there, so we wanted to have Steve come in and give his perspective, both on that and, and the other buildings as well, so. And, and just the final point, we haven't got the okay from town council to board up the, to spend money to board up the other buildings, but, uh, but hopefully we will, so, anyway, Steve?
Thank you, and while we all know that technically the Historical Commission doesn't need to be consulted by the trustees, we appreciate the fact that you have and have involved us in your discussion deliberations. I think there's no question the barn has to come down, it may come down on its own, and I wonder if maybe in the past the trustees kinda hoped it might. Uh, the time you have done something about the barn was twenty or twenty-five years ago. I believe those supports holding up the front wall, I think Joe Prandak said, two thousand and six, so they've done their job for thirteen years, but nothing else has been done to anything up there in that amount of time. Now, it's just interesting to note that the three buildings plus the barn were all built about the same time by the same builder. The barn is in much worse condition than the other buildings, although they're not in great condition, but those were income-producing assets of the trust until, well, two thousand and seventeen, in the case of the pest house. The barn, I don't believe, was ever an income-producing asset, and it was just allowed to be. The barn's gone, it has to be gone, and it's really unfortunate that the trust has to spend well into five figures to demolish it. How much better it would have been had that money been spent in the past to try to preserve the barn and have it reused in some capacity, rented to private individuals or used by the town. The barn's gone, we'd like to make sure the same thing doesn't happen to the other three buildings. Now, you almost wonder if the vegetation around the barn is helping to hold it up, it's that close and that tall. Same thing is going to happen to the other buildings. The vegetation is keeping the buildings from drying out, it's enabling animals to climb the trees and get into the buildings, there are broken windows, um, the other buildings have to be maintained, you have to try to preserve what's there, as you pointed out, they are assets of the trust, as is the four acres, and while we know this discussion's underway about what's going to happen to those four acres in the buildings, which were kind of in abeyance, working out the whole PULTI thing, because they had an option of clawing back some of those four acres, it didn't make a lot of sense for the town to do a whole lot with it, but those assets are being wasted, and it's kinda strong words, but if the trustees don't do what they can to at least stop the deterioration, could that be a breach of fiduciary duty? I'm no lawyer, but I think the barn, certainly the commission has no issues with the barn becoming down, but we do feel strongly that the town ought to spend a relatively small amount of money to secure those other buildings and to prevent further deterioration.
Thank you, Stephen, and again, it would be the trust, uh, rather than the town spending that money.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed, yes, the trust.
I know, that's what you meant, I know. Um, questions, comments?
Can I just add one more comment to that? Just, Steve's been spot on. Joe Prandak did look at trying to preserve some of the structures of the barn, but because it's so dilapidated, you can't go inside the building to take a look at what could be preserved and possibly used somewhere else, it's, it's, it's that far gone.
It's real, I mean, the front wall is being held up by those large beams, around the back, we saw, there's a roof collapse, there's a whole section of the barn that has just disappeared, and it's just so open and deteriorated that I would have to agree with that assessment, unfortunately. I mean, there must be some, must have been some gorgeous beams in that building, but you can't even get at it.
Other questions, comments? Um, so, uh...
I just wanna go and comment.
Ms. Conlon.
I, I agree with, with what Steve has said, I, I just think it's important that we point out that, because I wanna reiterate what you said, Steve, about the, about the agreement with PULTI, I mean, for, from between two thousand and eleven and early two thousand and eighteen, when we finally closed on that sale with PULTI, you know, that, that deal was tied up with, for a long time, was before the Attorney General's Office, then it went in through the courts, and then there was a lot of things that had happened for the permit to be issued by the planning board, and, and finally for the sale to take place, so there was a period of several years where, despite the fact that, um, you know, there was talk about, should we demolish the barn, there was talk about, and, and we did do some work to secure some of those buildings, the, a few, several years ago, there was a problem with raccoons getting into the main, um, house, and that, there was some boarding or some tarp or some other things put up to try to prevent that from happening. The difficult situation for the trustees was, you know, now we're in a position where we have a balance of about five point six million in that account, we had about three hundred thousand until a year and a half ago in that account, when the sale, the, the, the large portion closed, so, a, a small amount of money, having three hundred thousand, spending a significant amount of that to shore up buildings and to demolish the barn, when really the funds were supposed to be used for the benefit of the poor, there were some discussions about it, but we spoke, we spoke with town council, the, at the time, decision was made not to do, really to take any action, not only because of the cost, but the primary reason being, we were under an agreement with PULTI that might have allowed them to come back to us and say, we need some of those four acres, and we need to reconfigure the development that would take place up there, so that really left everything in a, a holding pattern for a while, and the, the pest house was still rented out, because that was much further away, but at some point, we had to terminate the tenancy, move the pest house, and I think no one wants to see anything, any, um, the pest house not be maintained, or the, or the other buildings not be protected to the extent we can, that there's, there's real debate about whether they can be rehabbed, or whether possibly replication is the only way to go down the road. I, personally, I'd like to see them be reused or rehabbed if we can, um, but people who have a lot more knowledge than I do would have to weigh in on, on that, but, so the, the reason that nothing had been done on them for a while was because of the agreement with PULTI, and the, the six or seven-year period, that probably nobody back in two thousand and eleven ever expected would go that long, um, that it took in order for that whole process to play itself out, so, but your points are well taken, Steve, so thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Um, I will say, uh, that, two things, one, uh, I think in, in addition to approving demolition, we should approve an amount, um, a, not to exceed amount, uh, appropriate, appropriate funds from the trust to, to pay for it. Um, I think some of the estimates are thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars.
That was Joe's rough estimate, he's, he's soliciting quotes.
So, so, um, well, if, if he's soliciting quotes, maybe, maybe we wait until we get the quotes, uh, to appropriate the funds, um, but let's, let's go ahead and approve the demolition, it is, it is ready, as everyone said, it is ready to come down, it is dilapidated. I will say, beyond that, um, the time is now for action, uh, because, uh, as Steve has pointed out, and as we saw, uh, the other buildings are, are in, um, tough shape as well, um, and, you know, it's an embarrassment frankly, and so we need to take some action now, and, um, you know, uh, you know, to the extent that we have, um, uh, people interested in that land, uh, and in those buildings, and in either renovating or replicating those buildings, um, for a purpose for the poor, um, we need to do it, because that, those buildings and that land is not helping the poor right now, so, so we need to, we need to, now that we can, and now that we're, now that we're past the PULTI situation, we need to take action, so we start using those assets for the poor, so that's all I'll say. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve that demolition, uh, for that building.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we'll get the quotes, and then, uh, we, once we get the number, we'll, we'll, um, appropriate the funds. Steve, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, sorry to keep you waiting.
No, not a problem at all.
All right, so now, um, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the meeting of the Governor's Tru, Governor Stoughton's trustees, because we, we have to come back to that, we have another couple of items on that, um, for the purpose of going back to our, uh, select board meeting.
I move to suspend the Governor Stoughton meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we'll entertain a motion to, uh, return to the select board meeting.
I'm moved to return to the select board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so now we will move to item ten, which is our discussion of FY twenty water and sewer rates. Mr. Berkley is here, and he is with someone else, who I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for having us. Uh, with me is Toby Federer, Toby's from the firm Watered and Current, uh, they've been doing the town's water and sewer rate analysis for, uh, a decade plus, um, and have, um, completed the FY twenty rate recommendation, uh, and working with us. So, just to, um, review where we are in the process, so, uh, at the annual town meeting in May, uh, water and sewer enterprise budgets are, um, appropriated and voted on, and, um, at the conclusion of the fiscal year, at the end of June, um, we are able to do an analysis of the purchases and sales of water and sewer, um, purchased from the MWA and sold to the residents of town, so, um, at about this time of year, um, it's, it's critical to set the rates for FY twenty, because the July water and sewer bills are ready to be set up. So, um, just to give you a little history, um, in FY eighteen, we, uh, had a zero percent increase overall in water and sewer rates, in FY nineteen, it was another modest increase of one point nine percent. Um, the increases were recommended FY twenty, or more than that, um, in Toby's analysis, we'll show you, and he'll explain how we arrived at those numbers, so, um, the goal of setting the water and sewer rates is always to break even, so, it's essentially a group of fixed costs, the largest always being the MWA payment, so, the way the MWA assessments work is we're paying off in FY twenty, our calendar year water and sewer from two thousand and eighteen, so they're always about eighteen months behind, and that's because it allows us to have a fixed number to plan for, um, this upcoming year, so our only real variable is how much water and sewer will we sell next year, and that's seasonally driven, so that can be a very positive number on a dry year where a lot of water is purchased, and can be a negative number in a wet year, so, that's always the balance, and why we have fund reserves to hopefully cover those shortfalls, and the overages will return that money to the fund balances. So, I'll let Toby just explain, um, how we arrived at the rate recommendations for this year, and then we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Sure, thank you for having me. Um, so, the process we, we went through this year is essentially identical to what's been go, what we've been doing, uh, within town for about a decade now, uh, with a single caveat, which was about three years ago, the town elected to, uh, change the tier sizes for large unit customers, or customers with more than five units, um, serviced by a single meter, uh, and that was done to, uh, to correct for what were some perceived inequities in, in this rate structure, because the town in Milton, as you know, does have a four-tier rates, where as you use more water, the rate, the volumetric rate per gallon goes up, and it goes up pretty significantly. volumetric rate per gallon goes up, and it goes up pretty significantly in town. And then, so when you have a multi-tier rate structure that's fairly steeply inclined, as you do, the effect that Chase was alluding to, the sort of dry year versus wet year impacts can be fairly significant. And last year, we actually did have a fairly short sales of water, so we ran a little bit short on our revenue numbers last year, less so on the sewer. But again, overall, water usage continues to decline in Milton, and to the extent that you are effectively attempting to break even, where your costs are not going down, we need to adjust basically the rates to account for two things. One is the increasing costs that it costs the town to provide water and sewer, and that's a combination of everything that's in the town warrants. And the second is, if we're selling fewer gallons, but still need to break even, we need to adjust our rates to generate the needed revenue off of the smaller usage numbers. And so those two items combined are what have led to the rate recommendation that we have this year. We do make our recommendations based on a multi-year average for water and sewer sales in the different tiers, and so those numbers have come down a little bit because of the light year last year. But the rate recommendation, I believe you've all had a copy of the report for a number of days, and I'm happy to answer any questions. But in essence, on the final page, we do give you basically the water and sewer rate recommendations. Overall, as the rubber meets the road, this ends up being about a 6% combined increase for water and sewer. It's slightly more than that on the water, or on the water side than on the sewer, but the combined increase is right around 6% in what the actual bills will be.
Questions, comments from the members?
I have none.
So Chase and Mr. Federer.
Toby Federer, yes.
Toby, Mr. Federer. I saw what the CF unit, what's the CCF unit?
That's 100 cubic feet. It's the, it's the, basically the unit by which you sell water to the customers.
Okay. And in terms of, in terms of the rates, the increase in the rates, so we're talking about a combined increase of 5.9%, as you said, about a 6%.
Right around 6%.
About 6%. What we're talking about per unit for families here in Milton is, for example, for the water rates, we're talking about in the first tier going up 48 cents. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right, going, an increase of 48 cents per, and it's a cubic, what was that?
That's per 100 cubic feet.
100 cubic feet.
So 100 cubic feet is equal to 748 gallons.
748 gallons.
This is an archaic unit that was developed many, many years ago, but is still widely in use because so many meters measure that way.
Okay. So for every 748 gallons, for people in those, for families in that tier one, they're going to go up 48 cents?
Per unit, yeah.
Per unit. Per, and that, each unit is 748 gallons. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So for every 748 gallons, the increase is going to be 48 cents?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, and that goes on for the rest of those tiers. Tier two, for every 748 gallons, the increase is going to be 58 cents?
That's correct.
And then tier three, for every 748 gallons, the increase is going to be 64 cents?
That's correct.
And, okay. And, you know, and then sewer rates, I think it seems like the increases are similar.
Similar percentage, but because you have a more steeply inclined sewer rate structure, the, you know, cents per HCF will be somewhat larger. But as, from a percentage basis, they'll be the same.
That's right. So tier one, we're talking about a 30 cent increase per 748 gallons for the sewer. Okay. And then, and then going on down the tiers, I think the increase is 58 cents per 748 gallons for tier two, and, you know, as the king and I would say, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right? So it's certain, it's, everything is kind of within that band, it seems, between 38 and 60 or 70 cents per 748 gallons. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. So that kind of.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just highlight on page 10 that we have some rate case scenarios, and so I'll just, the MWR, typical four-person household, so that'd be two adults and two children, for example, their average quarterly bill right now in FY '19 would, around $544, would increase about $32 per quarter.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's helpful. That's very helpful. So $32 per quarter, so we're talking about $128 a year.
But that is on a family of four, that is the MWR's base case, which is using around 90,000 gallons per year, which is a lot of water compared to what many smaller families use.
Okay.
So, for example, on, the person who's using basically the full amount of tier one, which is 600 HCF per quarter, their quarterly bill is going up $4.67 per quarter, so about $1.50 a month.
Okay. So, and about, about $16 a year. $4 a quarter.
Probably 18 to 20.
18, okay, 18 to 20.
$4.67 times four, so 16, 17, $18.
Chase, you want to add something?
Yeah, just that the tier structure does effectively provide a discount for smaller-sized families, and, you know, typically senior citizens who don't consume as much volume, they effectively see a discount because they use less water, so they're only billed at that lower tier level.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to get, I just wanted to get kind of a magnitude in terms of what families are going to be paying, how much more family's going to be paying, because it doesn't, I'm not aware unless somebody, unless you tell me, that we really have any alternative here.
The only alternative that you do see occasionally is if the municipality wishes to subsidize the water and sewer costs. That is, that is the alternative, where you operate under, basically nominally operate under the enterprise fund rules. The general fund of any community is allowed to subsidize an enterprise fund, but not the opposite direction under state law, so.
Given our financial situation, I don't know that that's really an option.
Two years ago, Mr. Chair, we used the surplus or retained earnings from each of our enterprise funds to mitigate an increase, but that is not at a sustainable level at this time.
And that, importantly, that was alluding to the year when we didn't have an increase. We specifically allocated within the budgeting process a portion of the excess revenues. The preceding year had been very dry, so the revenues were higher than we needed, and so we used some of the overrun on revenues from the preceding year to make sure we didn't need a rate increase two years ago. Where we can't tell exactly how many gallons we're going to sell in any given year, we're just trying to sort of shoot the middle of the range.
I have a follow-up question.
Ms. Collin.
Just, you mentioned, or maybe Toby mentioned, that the, three years ago, we made that change for multifamily condominiums. That was brought to us at the request of 88 Warf Street and the condominium association there. So after some discussion, we did vote to make that change. When I've asked this question before, about the administrative ease or burden of doing that, I know Chase and your predecessor, I think, had said that it was, it was doable, we were able to, we were not overburdened by it, because we don't have a lot of multifamily properties that have more than six units. Is that still the case?
Correct.
You finding it's still?
There's about 13 bills that we have to, you know, so it's a manual process we have to go through. We don't go through our billing system and our automatic meter reading system, but it's about 13 properties that utilize that policy right now.
Is that still manageable for the department?
It is manageable, manageable, yeah.
Okay.
And just as a point of reference, I, you know, part of the idea of why it was selected for five was that very point, is at the time that the preceding DPW director did not want to have to add staff, where it is a manual process, because your billing system can't do it automated, on an automated basis, it would have been needing to add staff to the water department in order to support going to a smaller unit count, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McCollin, we do get some phone calls from residents who live in smaller than, is it five units?
Correct.
With some concern about them being in a higher tier, because it's, there's one meter in the house, and there's that collective water, but that was the decision made by a prior board to cut it off at the five units.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think because, if I remember correctly, it's because it was going to be really administrative headache to have to do it for many, many, many properties.
Absolutely. It was an administrative burden was how we, we were taking a look at how many units we were going to need to do it for at different levels, and it rapidly, once we went below five, became administratively unsupportable with the, with the staff that you have at the water department.
Yeah, and, you know, we did, recognizing that it was having a huge impact on 88 Warf Street, they, as I said, they were the ones who sought this relief, but many other communities do not do that. My understanding of it was.
That's correct, yeah.
That this is, this is a little bit unique.
Yeah, there's many other communities in the Boston area where any sort of adjustment or sub-metering is taken care of by the people after the community's meter. You know, if they want to split the bill however they want to split it, they can, but from the standpoint of the multi-tier system, this application of water and sewer sales, it's based on the meter going into the property.
Any other questions or comments? I'm going to suggest that our motion here be to approve the four-tier water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2020, set forth in the letter from Chase Berkeley to the select board dated August 21, 2019. I think that gets you where you need to be, right, Chase?
It should, yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Federer. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you, everybody.
Pleasure.
Thank you. Let's see, my agenda. Item, sorry, item 11, future meeting dates. We have dates of September 4th, September 11th, and September 25th. Is that any concerns, comments, questions about those dates?
No.
All right. We'll move on. Item 12 is a discussion of the harbor master. I think we should defer this. I think Mr. Wells would want to weigh in on that, so we're going to defer that. We have, we have received the view of town council on that. I think the decision, one decision in the board would be whether this position should be cited in the police department or outside the police department, but we do have town council's opinion on how to deal with that. Either way, the board decides to go, so we'll take that up perhaps at the meeting on September 4th. Item 13, donations to the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition. Somebody want to take this?
I move to accept a $5,000 donation, dollar donation from Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital Milton, and a $1,000 donation from the First Congregational Church of Milton to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? I'll just point out that the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital donation will be used to enable the Coalition to complete a rethink the drink video to recruit a youth task force leader, which they're in the process of doing, and to advertise a vaping and social media campaign. So those are all very critical needs, and that we certainly thank the Beth Israel Deaconess for recognizing those needs and helping the Substance Abuse Coalition with that. And on the other one, the First Congregational Church, this donation will assist the Coalition to continue its, its mission of preventing and reducing youth substance abuse, so we certainly thank the First Congregational Church for that as well. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 14, approval.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to leave. I have to leave early tonight. I have a prior family commitment, but I want to thank you all for starting at 6:30 tonight to try to get a little bit more of this meeting in earlier, so I appreciate all my colleagues coming here early tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're almost done.
We almost made it.
Almost made it. All right, item 14, approval of one-day liquor licenses.
I move to approve one-day liquor licenses for the Forbes House Museum at 215 Adams Street on August 22, 2019, for a family picnic event, and September 20, 2019, for Barnfest. And, should I read the whole?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Okay. And for the Milton Arts Center at 334 Edge Hill Road on September 7, 2019, for the Evan Murphy Concert, September 14, 2019, for the Steve Sweeney Comedy Show, and October 3, 2019, for the Changemakers Open Mic Concert.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, motion. There we go. Item 15, boards and committees, reappointment of the Norfolk County Advisory Representative.
I move to reappoint Mr. Joseph Riordan of 49 Grafton Avenue as a Norfolk County Advisory Representative through August 30, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Mr. Riordan, our distinguished cemetery trustee, taking on yet another position for the town, so we thank him for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 16, approval of the MPEG extension agreement, and I think Mr. Lynch is here. Unfortunately, I don't think that we have heard from town council on the final language. Mike, if you want to come up, I think, and I probably should have got the word earlier to you, I think we need to, I think we need to have town council weigh in on the language. I know we've had it, and we haven't had it, it hasn't happened yet, but I think we need to have them weigh in on that last piece of, just the language on the capital contribution. I think everything else looks fine. Everything else is as it's been before, but I think we do need town council just to weigh in on that language, and we also need to get the final agreement from Comcast. We've signed it, they've agreed to it, we're still waiting for it from them. So I do apologize that we don't have those things buttoned up. Am I wrong about this?
I did speak to Kevin Freitag at Murphy Hesse to Milahane Lee today, and he was looking through it, but would defer to John's comment on that. We know there weren't too many substantive changes to what Mike had presented in the discussions that you, myself, and Mike had had last week, but he thought it would be in the best interest, you know, if this board does want to take a vote contingent upon John's approval of the substantive stuff, that's okay, but he did want John to take a look at it. Late conversation with Kathy Maloney from Comcast, it's apparently, the signatures are there, and that contract is heading its way, so it's kind of that quid pro quo.
Yeah, so one way or the other, or the other, even if we take it, if we vote it contingent, we'd still need to approve the, we'd still need to extend the existing contract beyond August 31, because we're not going to, we're not going to have a final vote by August 31, it seems to me. So with apologies, Mike, I think what we may do is just extend that contract through September 4, and then hopefully, and I fully expect we'll have those things buttoned up by September 4.
It should be longer than that.
What's that?
You should extend it longer.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
If they send it into a day, and I'll come back that day and I'll extend it again, you should just give yourself the time.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. I just want, I wanted to put the pressure on us, but, to get it done, but September 30 should do it. I mean, I fully expect we'll have it by September 4, but why don't we say September 30? So if we have a motion to extend the current MPEG agreement through September 30, 2019, I think that'll get us where we need to get.
Okay. I move to approve an extension of the agreement between the town of Milton, Massachusetts, and MPEG Access Inc. through September 30, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Apologies again, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Item 17, meeting minutes. We have the meeting minutes from December 12, 2018, December 26, 2018, and January 9, 2019. Oh. December 12, December 26, and January 9.
9, December 19.
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. Oh, I didn't have that. Okay. Oh, all right. Okay.
All right. I move to approve meeting minutes from December 12, 2018, December 19, 2018, December 26, 2018, and January 9, 2019.
And we had amendments that were circulated, I think, today. So Tony, can I, can I offer a friendly amendment to say that those minutes as amended? amendment to say that those minutes as amended?
Of course.
All right.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 18, the Town Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I would like to follow up on what Select Board Member Farrington said tonight. A lot of times in government, you only hear from people that have a problem or a request or a concern. This is not that. This, I was approached by members of deceased Milton firefighter Brian Carlson's family two weeks ago. For those of you, I never met Brian, I'm friends with his sister Cassie, who approached me. They are the most wonderful people in Milton. If you've seen the benches at the Milton Fire Station in East Milton Square, it was presented to me by Select Board Member Conlon a couple of weeks ago. They're in disrepair. We were working on getting them replaced. Cassie Hunt, Brian's sister and Brian's widow, approached us about donating a bench in his name at the Milton Fire Station, Engine 2 in East Milton Square. Timing's everything. This is something that they want to do for her brother and husband's memory. I think it's a great idea. They've taken the initiative to approach the town, they've identified a location where that was near and dear to Brian. I talked to Chief Grant about it. Chief Grant is all in and is totally in favor of it. I connected Cassie with Barney DeVore, who was in charge of some of the benches that we see around the parks and up on the town green, so that process with this board's approval to accept this donation in Brian Carlson's name would take place quickly. Barney used the company, they're soliciting quotes, and this is something they're going to do, but O'Brien and Sons had provided the benches, that, a lot of the benches that we see around town, playground planners use them as well, as I believe. But in a perfect world, they would like to purchase, donate, and dedicate this bench in Brian Carlson's name at the fire station on what would have been his birthday, September 29th. So with this board's approval, I'd like to set that ball in motion and get that underway.
Hundred percent. Absolutely.
I don't think there's any disagreement.
Great.
And then, and then I think, and then the process will be, once they get the number, then we'll accept, we'll accept the donation?
Accept the donation.
Perfect.
Yeah. So I can bring that back to you. I just wanted your permission first. It's, again, this is, this is the family reaching out, trying to, you know, put a bench in Brian's memory at the place where-
It's just the one bench?
Just the one bench.
The one bench, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Chief Grant's in full support-
That's great.
-of it, so.
That's great. So we'll look for the, we'll look for that either in the next meeting or September, or the September 11 meeting.
Great. That means a lot. I appreciate it.
Great.
Changing gears, obviously Milton Public Schools go back to school next week. We always ask people to drive a little care, more carefully. They go back to school Wednesday. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Consolidated Facilities, Bill Ritchie and his group, for all the work they're doing to get the grounds around the schools ready. Chase Berkeley, who was here earlier, they're out there repainting stop lines, crosswalks, any type of pavement markings that need to be done in and around the school area, so it's a work in progress, but the idea is to get ready for next Wednesday and just be aware that school is back in session and, you know, it's, it's an anxious time of year for some children, but a festive time for others, so just be careful on the roads and just, I want to acknowledge those two groups for the work that they did. And lastly, Nancy Stewart, our outreach coordinator here at the Council on Aging, took a fall last week and injured herself, so she's home resting. She's watching it on TV. I just want to extend our deepest sympathy to her and hope she gets well soon, so hope you feel better, Nancy.
We're all, we're all in agreement with that. All in agreement with that. All right. Thank you, Mike. Chairs, oh, yeah, please.
Mike, while we have your attention, could you kindly give us an update on Lincoln Street and its progress and when you think it might be finished? I drive down it every day, it looks wonderful. I can't wait to see the end result, but if you can give us some more-
Yeah, so I was there today as well. They're about two weeks out, about two and a half weeks out.
Okay.
There's some excavation that was done. You see the edge stone that was placed there recently. It's about, it's a little more than two weeks worth of work, so we're probably talking the first week of September.
Okay.
So with school opening next week and all the people that matriculate up and down Lincoln Street to get to the middle school-
Yeah.
It's going to be a work in progress-
Yeah.
And they understand that. There'll be police detail there to help people through, but they're working up at the school side, talked to Chase Berkeley, they're finishing the Brook roadside first and then going to work their way back down towards Thatcher, so.
I think that once it's complete, it is going to have the traffic calming effect that it was intended to have.
Yeah.
I think it's really going to make a world of difference on that street.
Yeah, and while we're talking about that, that was one of the three pieces of the Complete Streets policy, that was the 400, nearly $400,000 grant that was awarded to the, to the town. The other one will be getting underway shortly in the fall. That's one of those Hawk pedestrian traffic signals that's going to be placed at the bottom of the entrance to BID Milton on Reed'sdale Road. That construction will start in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah. And one more update?
Yes.
Curry College, the Ullin Rink update, I got a couple of phone calls today about this. People have heard that Curry College, who was our able and competent partner and anchor tenant at the rink for so many years, is going to relocate their NCAA hockey teams to the Canton Ice House effective immediately. They will honor their commitment to manage the rink for the town to the end of the permit, which is April 30th of 2020. New compressors are in, the boards are going in this week, they'll make ice Labor Day weekend, and the rink will be opened and managed by our willing and able partner, Curry College, through this season. Senator Timmelti has called a meeting for early next month to, with myself and D.C. to plan May 1st of next year onward, so. I want to thank Curry for their relationship with the town. We certainly wouldn't have been able to do it without them, and we appreciate them sticking around for the remainder of this, this one-year permit.
Yeah, 100%. They're a great neighbor and President Quigley does a great job and, yeah, 100%.
So in terms of the other uses of the rink, no changes except new boards, new compressors, and new women's locker rooms?
Yeah, the $500,000 that the senator had secured to us, so. Ongoing discussion with Curry as to how we matriculate the building in D.C., but I think people will be very impressed when they walk through the door on September 2nd of the improvements that were made, and then we're planning for the future of the permit and the anchor tenant.
All right. In terms, item 19, Chairs' Report, the only thing I have is in the, in the category of acts of kindness that we could all emulate. Every once in a while during the hot summer, Sean McCarthy buys cases of water for the Milton PD and just drops them off, and so it's, those are things that, you know, people do. They don't seek any, any congratulations, they just do it because it's the right thing to do, so, you know, certainly we thank Sean for doing those things and I'm sure that he will keep doing it, and maybe it'll inspire others to do those kinds of things as well, so that's, that's all I have.
Is that the champ?
That's the champ. That's the champ.
This is a couple of Shavuot.
No, no, yes, no, yeah, no, it's, it's the champ, yes. I should have, I should have made that clear, so.
He gave you that notebook.
He gave me this notebook, and I'm using it. I'm using it. All right. So anything else? Members' report.
I have nothing there.
Citizen Speak Response, we don't have anything. Future agenda items, does anyone, we have some, we have some that have been already pointed out in writing. Are there any, anything else that any of the members have that we want to add to the list?
Not at the moment.
That isn't already there?
No, not at the moment.
I am looking forward to that update from the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
Yes, that will be-
We haven't heard from them in a while.
That will be an important one.
Okay.
Community happenings.
Can I add one?
Oh, please.
So Bill Ritchie would like to come in and talk about possible improvements to the Milton Arts Center and Kidder Library.
Yes. Okay.
If we can add that to the agenda.
Yeah, we'll put that on.
He's available on the 4th. He has a school committee meeting, so if we could put him somewhere in the middle of the agenda.
On the 4th?
But not too late, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's referencing the email that you sent, so it's correct?
Yes, yep. What to do and where and, yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right. Community happenings. So we have a few listed. Who wants to, who wants to mention these?
I'll be happy to rattle some off.
Ms. Collins.
Thursday, August 22nd, the Forbes House Museum Outdoor Concert and Games from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Wednesday, August 28th, at the Town Hall gazebo, there's a concert, the Neville Sisters. Wednesday, September 4th, Town Hall gazebo concert is Car's Fancy, if I said that correctly.
You did.
Thank you. Sunday, September 8th, at the Suffolk Resolves House, it's their open house from 1 to 3. Tuesday, September 17th, the 100 Women Who Care at 10 Bassett Street, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. That's something I took part in last time, and Google it if you're interested, so 100 women give $100, and all that money goes to a charity that's chosen that evening. Pretty exciting. Friday, September 20th, Forbes House Museum, Barn Fest, beer, food, and music from 6 to 9.
Great. All right. Anything else on the community happening side? Let me ask this before we go any further. Do we have items to discuss for Governor Stoughton?
Well, really, I wanted to get a sense from the board whether we wanted to meet with the Martin and Swift trustees to just talk about their experience in running their, their trusts and see how we might work together on some of our common issues, things like that, and then also to-
So let's-
Draft a, draft a proposal for asset use. And so my question is, do we want to use the Finance Committee to do those things? Do we want to do that as a group and set something up?
So let's adjourn the Select Board meeting and then talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we were going to go forward.
Right, no, and I didn't know if it made sense to talk about that without Richard and Katie here.
Well, what do you think?
I don't know. Let's adjourn and talk about that.
All right, let's do that. All right. Motion to adjourn the Select Board meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will return to the Governor Stoughton's meeting, Governor, the Stoughton Trust Fund meeting, and we will go to item 3, the discussion of the Governor Stoughton Asset Use Plan.
Mm-hmm.
So, Ms. Collins.
So, last year, Member Conlon had drafted and sent out a document that we never got to, and it gave us some, some nice history about the, the point at which the trust received that, what was it, about $5 million. And at the time, the amount that could not be, you know, of principal that could not be used, that had to be retained, was about $193,000. And now there's, there are certain questions. Is that still the appropriate amount? What, how, what is the vision for using these funds to benefit the poor of Milton? What kinds of parameters do we want to set? Do we want to preserve capital? So I think those are very real questions, and the Martin and Swift trustees had invited us to meet, and hearing some of their experience and also talking to them about some of their plans, they had mentioned also trying to use their assets, not just to meet the short-term needs of fuel and emergencies, but to look for those game-changing opportunities for people to, to support licensure for nursing degrees and things like that. So I just think that to hear what's on their minds would also benefit us, so that's really a couple of things. You know, do we want to make a more formalized policy of asset use and also how assets, I mean, I realize that there's a limitation to how the assets can be invested, but, but to put those in place, because every time, every election season, this, the trustees change in some way, even, even with the addition of one new person, and I just feel that it needs to, there needs to be something formal in place. But I don't know if that's better to talk about, it's better to talk about this with all five of us here, so people can weigh in on the proper way to do that.
So let me ask you this. Do you think a meeting with the Martin and Swift trustees will help inform on an asset use policy, or are they really two separate things?
I really, I, I think that it could possibly, but I think we don't know that until we talk with them.
Right. I mean, so I'm very much in favor of both, of meeting with them to, you know, learn about what their best practices are-
Mm-hmm.
And what they do, and I'm very much in favor also of an asset use policy. So that's my, that's my view, and I don't know that we need a motion to, to set up a meeting with them.
Right.
I think we can just meet, and I don't think it's just the Finance Committee, because it's not the Finance Committee, the Governor Stoughton trustees, it's really all the trustees.
Right, right. Well, that was my feeling, but I, I didn't, I didn't know what the others would think.
So unless Tony disagrees?
I do not disagree. No, this is, this is a great idea. It's been brought up before, and I think it's a wonderful idea, so we should, we should move on.
We just do something, okay.
So I think we move forward with a, with a meeting, you know, set up a meeting with them, and obviously be an open meeting, and then, and then move forward from that towards an asset use policy.
Okay.
That's my view, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The discussion with the Housing Committee and Affordable Trust, the Housing Trust, that will be deferred, is that?
Well, I, I, let's see. Well, I can give, I can give the board an update of our meeting today, actually. That was what was intended by this. So representatives of the, actually, the Planning Board, our Chair, Cheryl Taguas, was there, and members of the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Committee, as well as Bill Clark, our planner, met with Karen Sinnerborg, who is our Housing Production Plan Consultant, and she's a deep and long history in this industry, so she's, we're really lucky to have a resource like Karen. But we met with her today to go over a draft of updated demographics, and the next step is to hold a forum, a housing forum, that the public will be invited to, and that date is September 14th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the COA. We're going to arrange for childcare, so, and use a number of channels to try to get the information out, and we'll be publicizing this along with a similar meeting that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is having subsequent to the housing forum on the 14th, because they're working on getting input for the Planning Board to create zoning for the Milton Village, which, of course, housing is a piece of, so they're, they're looking forward to seeing what comes out of the housing forum. So that's really the update at the moment. We just need to put some publicity plans together, and I will work with our stalwart executive secretary on that.
Okay, so we'll get that publicized. So the housing forum is on the 14th, and that is to-
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, and that is to get input generally from the public on housing needs and costs?
Yes, yes, and to let people know what's been going on in Milton, so, but, but yes, the main, the main point is to get people's input and, and also give people a new, you know, a new opportunity to meet each other. That's a big part of these experiences, so.
Great. Any other comments, questions? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn this meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust Fund.
Aye, second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. We will see you again on September 4th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Have a nice Labor Day.
Good meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right.